Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight for our June 6th Lower Paxton Township Board Supervisors Meeting. This is a business meeting. My name is Sam Miller. I'm Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director. For those in attendance tonight, thank you for being here. In customary order, we'll give a brief overview of the agenda for those viewing through television tonight. Under New Business, we will have a public hearing in relation to a proposed transfer of a restaurant liquor license into Lower Paxton Township from the city of Harrisburg for 4,600 Jonestown Road under 524 Enterprises. After that point, we will have an action on the table for Resolution 2305, which would approve the transfer of that restaurant liquor license as well. Following that, we have an action to authorize payment of application number two and number three for reception area renovations and safety upgrades to the municipal center. We'll also have action on a change order, number two, from East Coast Contracting for those renovations worked to the reception area of the municipal center. Next, we will have an action on Resolution 202309. This would authorize the submission of a grant request for Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Finance Authority for a Stray Winds Park Improvements project. And then we'll have action on Resolution 2023-10, which would request a peer grant from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCNR, for Lower Paxton Township Park Agreement with sports organizations. Several items under subdivision and land development, the first being an action on preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan for proposed Take Five. That's Plan Number 23-06. Action on preliminary subdivision and land development plan for Elizabeth Village. That's Plan Number 23-12. And then we'll have some improvement guarantees for review and approval. Finally, the payment of bills for the township and the township authority and any announcements before adjourning. With that, the board is seated. The Corum is present. We're ready to conduct business.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We'll call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise, and Supervisor Navarro will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That takes us to approval of minutes of the April 18th, 2023 business meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2023 business meeting.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The Board of Supervisors, actually, we did not meet an executive session prior to the meeting tonight, which is a bit unusual, but we now have time for public comment. Public comment is a time, if you wish to speak to the board on an item that's not on the agenda. If you are here to make a comment or question or offer an opinion or whatever on an item that's on the agenda, you would be afforded the opportunity to do that at that time. So now would be the time, if anybody would like to speak to the board, please come to the podium in the center of the room and give us your name and address. Good evening.
Good evening. Mary Lou Knowles, 1034 Oak Knoll Drive, President of Summit Point HOA.
Of which, ma'am? Lower the microphone just a little.
Summit Point HOA.
Thank you.
Summit Point is a single-family residential community in Lower Paxton Township. As an HOA, we are required to comply with state and local laws of government. In most cases, townships prefer HOAs because they keep property values elevated, which increase tax revenue for the township and county, of which the HOA does not receive any benefit from that to maintain our community. You do not repair our streets or snow removal. Municipal waste should not be included in that residential, in that critical decision. We have signed an e-petition to submit to you to include Summit Point in the residential municipal waste contract with Penn Waste. In reference to Mr. Gottschall's email that he sent to me May 11th, 2023, I am sorry that your staff was unable to address two phone calls and two emails from me concerning Summit Point contract with Waste Management in a timeframe of 19 workdays and is recently, currently unresolved. In my efforts to rectify, the issue requires me to reach out to other resources. I will continue to do so. We have the right call of freedom of speech, and I have an obligation to the residents of Summit Point. Also, it is my opinion that if your staff is overwhelmed by the resources they are spending on this matter, they should address that with all of you. It is obvious that the township was not prepared for the change in municipal waste hauler. We cannot correct the unjust treatment of Summit Point in the past, but we can have a positive outcome going forward. I would like your response as to what you expect Summit Point to do at this point.
What are you asking for? I'm not clear.
We currently have a contract with Waste Management.
Okay.
It does not expire until October of '24. So what do we do? Mr. Gottschall said there is no opt-out.
That would be true. You have a separate contract. The HOA is a separate contract with Waste Management. It doesn't fall under the township contract.
Exactly. We were, I was informed by Waste Management that we were not permitted to enter the contract that they had, that all of you had, with Waste Management, that we had to have a separate commercial contract. We do not have dumpsters. We had individual residential households in that development.
So you had a separate contract for, like you just said, individual, because I know some, some use dumpsters, but you're saying yours is an individual, separate contract for your HOA for independent house residential pickup?
Yes.
Okay.
Our, our charges from Waste Management were paid through our HOA fees.
Can I just ask how long that contract, how long you've had that contract?
Well, I've lived here for 10 years, and it's been in effect ever since.
Wow.
Yeah, I think this contract has been in place for some time. Ma'am, I, I have been working with Brad and our team in relation to Summit Point and a number of other HOAs that are in a similar capacity. We have members of our communications team, which is planning a strategy to reach out to each of the HOAs to ensure that there are no contractual issues to resolve, but essentially, Waste Management has already been in discussion with us, and it's just coordinating the efforts between the two for the cessation of those contracts and then bringing your group and other groups onto the township contract. It unfortunately just takes time because it's some legal tape to walk through with a lot of larger parties than us.
Well, their excuses are waiting to hear from you, and you're telling me you're waiting to hear from them.
Well, it's not that we're waiting here from them. We're working through that process with a previous hauler, a current hauler, as well as legal review and our communications team. So again, it's, it's a multifaceted process, but it is occurring.
Okay, so if Summit Point receives bills from the township for Penn Waste, but we're still in this contract with Waste Management, what do I tell my residents?
Well, the, the contract with Waste Management would cease upon the start of the Penn Waste contract. It's just a coordination of the communications that has to occur over these next couple weeks.
I think this whole thing was ridiculous. We have been overcharged over $10,285 from October of '21 till the end of March of this year by Waste Management. And how that got away with everybody, I don't know. I think it's very unfair and unjust to the residents of Summit Point.
Was, was that overcharge under your private contract with them?
The private contract stated $1,099 a month, but they tacked on all these extra charges. So we've been paying an average of $1,554 a month.
How many, how many residents live there? How many households?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Yes.
And we had, we had no idea of the, the situation until we started to do the evaluation of the, of the accounts. Once we got Waste Management's records, started to meld with the township's records, and we identified, I, I wouldn't say a lot, but more than half a dozen relationships like this where there were, you know, what they would call commercial off-contract.
And as part of this, Mr. Miller, is it anything to do with the automated collection to where Penn Waste may not be able to do this kind of thing?
No, this, this was really solely how some of these developments grew, and I think some of them based on their, their type of structure. It was going to be easier to service them on separate contracts where they would put in consolidated dumpsters or containers or things of that nature. Summit Point is one of, I think, three oddly unique ones where it wasn't like that. Everyone's still got individualized service, but like I said, very few of them, but it is one that we're working directly with.
We don't even have room for a dumpster.
Yeah. Yeah, they're all single-family homes. They're not even row townhouse homes, which are mostly, which we're dealing with.
Right.
So, so the, the bottom line is that July 1st, so their, their contract with Waste Management runs for a longer period of time than our contract with Waste Management. What happens in those intervening months? Does Waste Management still service them, or does Penn Waste?
It, it would cease July 1st. And the coordination discussion, we've, we've been discussing with Waste Management and Dawn Isabella now for about a month in relation to this exact topic.
A month?
Yes.
I brought this to the township back in April 24th.
Yeah. Well, and, and we started to evaluate the projects, and it determined that that was one of the ones that was a question mark because it wasn't on Waste Management's records that they provided to us. So when we first started this process back in, back in March and April, based on February records, Summit Point wasn't in the records we received. We had no idea.
Of course not. They're making big bucks off of us. Why would they tell you?
But I know in relation to that, like I said, the, the biggest key there is communications are occurring with the HOAs as we move forward here, and especially in relation to any contractual relationships, which would have to cease. And, and some may be in a little different situation than Summit Point where the prices could be, you know, reasonably different from what you were paying.
All right. How are you going to communicate that to us?
That is going to come directly from our communications team working with the HOA groups. And as I said, that's going to spool out over these next couple of weeks.
And who's your HOA groups?
It would be the president, vice presidents of the HOA groups that we're looking at. There's probably about two dozen groups that we'd be reaching out to, Summit Point being one of those.
Mr. Miller, can I ask you a question? So the letter that went out to the residents last week, so the residents in Summit Point did not receive that letter?
No, we didn't.
They did.
Oh, you did receive it?
Yes, anyone that would be considered qualified under our new contract, starting July 1st, received that letter, which did include a number of properties that would, this would be the first time they would fall under that contract.
Well, don't you have any obligation to the residents of Lower Paxton Township with regard to these companies coming in and getting them to enter into these separate contracts away from the other things that you supply?
Well, why did your HOA enter into the contract then instead of?
They were told that we weren't allowed to enter into your contract.
Who told them that and when?
I don't know.
Apparently a long time ago.
Apparently.
And since that time, there have been multiple new contracts that occurred, but, you know, we have, as you know, we've sent out a letter so far to all residents outlining the process that we were required by law to follow. There will be another mailing from Penn Waste, which should be coming out any day?
That's right. It will be mailed either tomorrow or the day after tomorrow.
And it will be extremely detailed as to what is going to occur and what the parameters are, how you prepare the trash, all those sorts of things. What we're finding in the process of the changeover is a number of anomalies that have to be worked through, of which this type of situation is one. Now, there will be communications at such point as we have something definitive to communicate.
Mr. Miller, can I just ask, was the township aware that there were these HOAs that were, Waste Management had separate contracts with?
No.
Were we, we were not aware of that?
And, and to this point, the township had contracted for a service where the hauler was responsible for identifying the properties. The township would assist. With any questions or audits, they would perform. So we did not have really an understanding of these off-book contracts, I guess you would say. But this process of, of bringing the billing, collection in-house as a means to, to save the taxpayers' money, identified a lot of different properties that we were unaware, were not under the township's service.
You're growing the long list, you're on the long list of people who don't want to own, own this problem. So unfortunately, it is what it is.
No, 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 there's not a list of people who don't want to own it. This is the first we're hearing about it. I was on an HOA for 20 years. I just got off not too long ago. Honestly, I never heard of such an arraignment, arrangement. We count on the, the hauler to identify most of the properties. They have 15,000 residents that they're now trying to transfer to this new contract that we, we had to, we had to accept. The contract's up. There's a certain amount of time where you can put it out for bid, and the timing was contractually obligated, but I can tell you, no one's passing the buck. It's just a massive undertaking, and I honestly never heard certainly of your situation and certainly not of that situation for HOAs. This is, I promise you, nobody's passing the buck. There's just, it's such a massive undertaking, and your, your, obviously, your development is part of it. It's on the radar. It's, there's probably 20 other developments that they're working with, and I can assure you, it's, it's, it may seem like it, but it's such a huge undertaking that they're, they're trying to handle all the moving pieces in a responsible way.
And if I can just ask a question, you're in R1 back there?
Yes.
Okay. So whoever, and maybe it wasn't you, whoever started this contract with Waste Management years ago, did it not ring a bell that they, you were classified as commercial when you're in an R1? Because that should have been the first question.
Yes, it should have.
Right.
I've only been president of this HOA since last October.
Oh, okay.
And the deeper I dig, the worse it gets.
Oh.
Okay?
Okay.
So, but if I went back, Hidden Lake, which they were Phase One, Summit Point was Phase Two of Hidden Lake, okay? Hidden Lake, 12 years ago, had a commercial account with Waste Management. They decided to join your contract 12 years ago and go to single payer, which is what they did.
But they never, as far as you know, they never told you guys?
No.
So you're two separate HOAs?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they're, they're dealt with a little differently than we are. Because they're, they have like four adjoining like condominiums. We don't have that. We have single houses. So it's a little different, the way our fees are structured.
Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention because I've been in homeowners association for 47 years. I've never heard of it either.
Never heard of anything like that before.
Well, we were obviously taken advantage of.
Yes.
Obviously.
Yeah, I'm in an HOA too, and never, never heard of that either.
You know, you know, there, there seems to be some contractual legalities involved that I would think, Mr. Solicitor, if they're, if they're into a current contract, if somebody breaks the contract, isn't there a legal issue there?
Potentially a breach.
Yeah. So I, I don't understand, as of one July, all of a sudden, their contract is no longer valid when it is valid.
Well, it may be, it may be mutually beneficial.
Yeah.
You're, you, you've said that you've been massively overcharged, so obviously you would like to not be massively overcharged.
Exactly.
And Penn, and Waste Management now not doing the whole township, to send trucks in just to do a couple spots is going to be economically unfeasible. So maybe a point where it's mutually acceptable to discontinue it, and then your residents are just on the Penn Waste contract with everybody else.
I, I looked at the contract. I don't think it's a legal contract.
Oh, okay.
The address on the contract states 5675 Union Deposit Road. That's not our address.
So Sam, is there any doubt that, is there already the understanding that once the Penn Waste contract takes effect, they're going to be serviced by Penn Waste, and they're not going to be paying Waste Management?
That is a general understanding with Waste Management.
Not going to be paying both, right?
Because again, with them being the, you know, the previous provider of the service, there's been discussions directly with them. So they're aware of the changes and are accepting that they're going to have to walk away from a handful of contracts. But again, this is a careful walkthrough because there are a number that are not with Waste Management who are maybe unaware of our change that's happening and the identification. So again, it's, it's a communication standpoint between legal communications and the HOAs directly. But in relation to Summit Point, that one came up early and is one that was looked at as, you know, this is one that the contract is just going to cease, and it's going to convert. And then, like I said, with, within the month timeframe before it starts, the communications will occur between the township and the HOAs to clarify all that and make sure everyone's on the same page.
Well, are we going to be penalized?
No, no. Waste Management is not going to penalize for cessation of that contract.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Would anybody else like to address the board on an item? Yes, please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
I'm Stephanie Shuey, and I live at 6650 Jordan Drive, which is in Hodges Heights. I'm here on behalf of a group of neighbors from Kendall Oaks, Huntley, Hodges Heights, Sunny Hill Farms, and Maiden Creek. There's a lot of concerns over the trash issue, and I don't want to beat a dead horse. I understand it's a huge undertaking. One of the questions and concerns has been brought up. With the contract, we noticed that it is going up a little bit incrementally, and we understand that with any transition from manual to automatic, there is going to be costs associated that are going to get passed on. That's just business. But what we don't understand is, after the first year, we would think that those costs would come back down because we're not paying for updated trash trucks or, you know, trash cans or any of that thing. So the question is, why is the contract continually going up, and we don't see it backing off after, say, the first year?
Well, they would, they would amortize the cost of providing the trash bins over the length of the contract. What we found happening is, we're all acutely aware, we've had roughly seven to seven and a half percent inflation over the last couple of years, and it's not likely to go down much for at least another couple. So when we put the contract out for bid, that's what each of the firms included in, in their bid, and Penn Waste was the lowest bidder. So nobody would perform the service without those escalators in it.
Okay.
And, you know, we, we somewhat saw this coming because we were watching what happened in, what, Middle Paxton, which, what, doubled? Dairy Township had a bigger increase than us, so did Swatera Township, West Hanover. This has unfortunately been the industry standard in every municipality. What's it, 80 different firms that were sent bid information? Only three actually bid on it, I guess because we're a large municipality. And of the three, Penn Waste was the lowest. So the, the pricing structure was the lowest bid that we could get.
Okay. And the other question has to do with, was, why wasn't there any manual trash pickup like we currently have versus going to this automated? I know everybody wants to get into the fancy and wonderful, and that's great, but it seems like with a lot of folks and even in this room, we're not prepared for where we need to be come July 1st. So is there any way, this is question number two, to move this back another month to get people in a good position to really get into the swing of what we're doing here?
Well, the reason, the reason why there's no manual is because nobody would bid on it. We did put out bids that included manual collection, included bag tags and things of that sort. No company would bid on doing it. Every company insisted on the automated system, and we can't push it back another month because our contract with Waste Management ends on June 30th, so we have to have somebody else to collect trash starting July 1st, so.
Understood.
That, and they did decline to extend. So we did attempt to extend with them as well to keep it as it is, but they.
Good point, Sam. We did, we did first ask for an extension from Waste Management, and they would not do it.
Okay. And did I hear you correctly? You're no longer doing the bag tags? Nobody's going to do that?
Nobody would bid on it.
If I could just offer, at the end of the contract, like Mr. Henry said, Lower Paxton Township will own all of the totes, the recyclable tote and the trash tote. So they will be our property at the end of the contract.
That's correct, but the cost still gets passed along to the residents even though the township owns it. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be different if the township was going to soak up the cost, but we know you guys aren't going to do that. We are paying for that. Let's be honest here.
Well, if, if, if the township were to absorb the cost, you and us would still be paying for it because it would be tax dollars, which is, you know, taking the money out of one pocket or the other.
Right. But ownership shouldn't be in the hands of the township if the residents are paying it either, really. Should it?
Yeah, the, the only part of this that we really had any, I don't know if you want to say control or any flexibility on was on the billing, where Penn Waste, all of them, wanted to charge $30 per quarter for processing every bill. Mr. Miller and Mr. Gottschall and our staff developed a plan where we could bring it in-house, and it would be about $5 a month. So we were able to shave $25, or $5 a quarter. We were able to shave $25 a quarter off the cost. And unfortunately, that was really the only flexibility we had, so we, we took the one step that was available to us.
Right. I did see that, and I appreciate that. Was there any other?
And the other question has to do with, was, why wasn't there any manual trash pickup like we currently have versus going to this automated? I know everybody wants to get into the fancy and wonderful, and that's great. But it seems like with a lot of folks, and even in this room, we're not prepared for where we need to be come July 1st. So is there any way, this is question number two, to move this back another month to get people in a good position to really get into the swing of what we're doing here?
Well, the reason, the reason why there's no manual is because nobody would bid on it. Uh, we did put out bids, uh, that included manual collection, included bag tags and things of that sort. No company would bid on doing it. Every company insisted on the automated, uh, system. And, uh, we can't push it back another month, because our contract with Waste Management ends uh, on June 30th, so we have to have somebody else to collect trash starting July 1st, so.
Understood.
That, and they did decline to extend. So we did attempt to extend with them as well to keep it as it is, but they.
Good point, Sam. We did, we did first ask for an extension from Waste Management, and they would not do it.
Okay. And did I hear you correctly? You're no longer doing the bag tags? Nobody's going to do that?
Nobody would bid on it.
If I could just offer, um, at the end of the contract, like Mr. Henry said, Lower Paxton Township will own all of the totes, the recyclable tote and the, um, trash tote. So they will be our property at the end of the contract.
That's correct. But the cost still gets passed along to the residents, even though the township owns it. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be different if the township was going to soak up the cost. But we know you guys aren't going to do that. We are paying for that. Let's be honest here.
Well, if, if, if the township were to absorb the cost, you and us would still be paying for it, because it would be tax dollars, which is, you know, taking the money out of one pocket or the other.
Right. But ownership shouldn't be in the hands of the township if the residents are paying it either, really. Should it?
Yeah, the, the only part of this that we really had any, I don't know if you want to say control or any flexibility on, was on the billing. Uh, where, uh, Penn Waste, all of them, wanted to charge $30 per quarter for processing every bill. Um, Mr. Miller and Mr. Gottschall and our staff, uh, developed a plan where we could bring it in-house, and it would be about $5 a month. So we were able to shave $25, or $5 a quarter. We were able to shave $25 a quarter off the cost. And unfortunately, that was really the only flexibility we had. So we, we took the one step that was available to us.
Right, I did see that, and I appreciate that. Was there any other businesses that could contract out to do the billing? That would even be cheaper yet? Did we even check on that?
Well, that, there may be a third party, and it's something we can look into going forward. But we don't.
The only reason, we already have a billing system for sewer and stormwater. So it was just a matter of taking them, adding maybe two part-time employees, and doing it that way. So that just seemed to make the most sense and the most cost-effective. Over the long tor- term, yeah, we've never had to do trash billing before. So I'm sure we're going to be looking at alternatives. But it'd be, I, I think it's unlikely that just bringing in two part-timers, that we could get something cheaper than that. But I'm sure, once we're getting into this, that they would look at that.
Sure. That makes sense, I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and the last and final question I have, is there any way for residents to opt out of this whole Penn Waste thing? Because honestly, some of them are just at a loss for affording it.
I don't believe, Mr. Solicitor, that's not legally possible, is it?
Uh, it's not possible to opt out, no.
Don't we have an ordinance that you have to have a trash?
Correct.
That we have, right?
Yes.
I thought it was, I thought the ordinance said something about, you have to have the trash unless you get an approved, uh, thing from the township to use somebody else. I thought that's what the ordinance.
No.
Okay. So no opt-out.
And the way we're billing too, because we're billing through the sewer, um, I'm sure there are some people that Waste Management might have missed that aren't paying trash, and through the sewer, um, this way, everybody will be billed.
Okay.
Yeah, your largest expense is the postage.
Yeah.
Yeah. And try to consolidate all the bills under one stamp, so to speak, is a cost-saving.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, I was thinking with the bag thing, it would have been beneficial on everybody's part if, if that could have happened, because it would actually force people to recycle more. But.
And that was, uh, I think that's again connected to the automated totes, that that just made the per bag. And, and if, if you haven't picked up on it yet, that, this is something we didn't want to do, obviously. We were one of the last holdouts with those big cans. I'm still not sure where I'm going to be able to put them in my modest house. People should know that, and they're, they're going to get information from Penn Waste shortly, how to trade down. Penn Waste assures us, say, maybe, don't do it too quickly. 90% of the people end up using the big ones. For me, it's just going to be where to put it. But we held out as long as we could on those cans, and obviously, um, we didn't want the market conditions to be what they are, and they just dictate. And they're, it's so hard for them to get workers. That's why their, their, their price went up so much. We know a lot of residents with yard waste collection, with Waste Management over the last year or two, they were missing a lot of pickups, because they just didn't have enough people to man the trucks. So this is an industry-wide problem, then just, and then you add inflation, and we're just, just in a bad situation, and we're trying to make the best of it. And we put the bids out there for everything that we like, and they all just turn their nose at it, nope. So, at the end of the contract, we got to get that trash picked up.
Understood. One more suggestion on another note while I'm up here. Would you guys mind putting your agenda online? You have your meetings and when they are, but we don't have.
They're online.
The agenda's online.
It's online every week.
Going to the right spot.
Usually by the Friday.
Friday or first thing Monday morning.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Friday or first thing Monday morning.
Yeah, right off the main page, there's, there's a button for agendas and minutes. And if you click on that, you just go to the, it'll have a complete listing of all of our meetings and agendas for the different boards and commissions. You just go to the Board of Supervisors meeting, and you can see the agenda and the materials.
Okay. I was thinking it was in under the date you had it, but that's okay, I can go there. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to address the board on an item not on the agenda? Again, if you'd come to the podium and give us your name and address, please?
Hello.
Hello.
Christine Smith, 4501 Berkeley Street. Um, I'm also about the waste, and I would like to put my voice in for senior citizens. I've had on Facebook, I've had a lot of people I've been, um, communicating with, and the senior citizens are just worried about it. It's, what's the cost? And we have like two bags a week, if that. Um, that's like, would take me two months to fill that up. Um, so maybe a discount for senior citizens would go far. Even if it's 10%, it helps instead. We would really like to opt out of it, or ba- per bag, but, um, you'd get a lot of points for senior citizen discounts. That's it.
Wish we could.
You can.
Protect, no, we can't, no.
I was going to say, we're all sitting here, but we got one.
And, and, I think I qualify as being a senior citizen. I know Robin, Robin does, but.
Yeah, we all do, except for Paul, so.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and ma'am, we only, my husband and I, we only put one bag out a week. That is it, you know? But it is what it is, you know? I'm just, I'm just glad that we have trash pickup.
But no, we can't impose that. We legally can't.
Okay.
If we could, we certainly would, but. There's a large, there, there's many parts of this that we would do differently if we had the ability to do so.
Thank you for listening.
Well, no, thank you for being here. Uh, anybody else? On an item not on the agenda? So then I would take it, everybody else is here for an item that is on the agenda. Okay, well, thank you all very much for being here. It's, it's very helpful to us, uh, to have folks like you come and ask these questions. It gives us just another opportunity to try to communicate. And, uh, as was mentioned, you're going to be receiving some very detailed information from, uh, Penn Waste here, uh, over the next couple of days. Hopefully, that will answer many of your questions. Okay, with that, uh, Mr. Gottschall is unable to be with us this evening, and, uh, Sam, do you have any report that you would like to give in his absence?
I do not, sir.
You do not, thank you. No old business, so we have a very lengthy, uh, agenda of new business. And we are going to begin with a public hearing and action on Resolution 23-05, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license, uh, into Lower Paxton Township from the city of Harrisburg. Uh, this would be a public hearing, so I will turn it over to Mr. Stein, our solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is time and date set for the public hearing with regard to Resolution 23-05 approved, which would approve the transfer of a restaurant liquor license, R-16243, into Lower Paxton Township from the city of Harrisburg. Um, is the applicant here this evening?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. May I please the chairman and members of this honorable Board of Supervisors? I am Steve Nicholas, Attorney for 524 Enterprises LLC, Pennsylvania Limited Liability Company. Uh, it was, the company was organized on September 28th, 2012. First of all, thank you for taking your valuable time to allow our presentation regarding Resolution 23-05 before you this evening. I also wish to thank Mr. Guttchall, Township Manager, and his staff for the courtesies that are always extended to us when we visit Lower Paxton Township. Also, Amanda Zerby has been extremely helpful to us getting before you this evening. 524 Enterprises LLC owns retail restaurant liquor license R-16243, which is now issued for use by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board at 524 McClay Street in the city of Harrisburg. My client opened the business in the city on May 13, 2013, but the business is not currently active. My client voluntarily placed the license in safekeeping with the Liquor Control Board on March 13, 2020. Because of problems he was beginning to notice in the business from disorderly clientele, and partially due to the COVID. My wish, my client wishes to transfer the license and its business into Lower Paxton Township. During the seven years the business was operating at the Harrisburg location, the business was never cited by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Enforcement Bureau for any violation of any liquor laws or regulations. So we appear before you with an unblemished record. My client intends to bring a quality, well-operated eating establishment to Lower Paxton Township, specifically located in the Colonial Park Mall at 4600 Jonestown Road, Unit 89, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. This location was previously occupied by Buffalo Wild Wings, which is all, was, is also a licensed restaurant. The sole owner of the company is Sergeet Kalicia, who is not with me this evening. My client is on a pre-planned vacation to Puerto Rico with his family. With me, however, is Kamal Kalocia, Sergeet's brother. Sergeet Kalodia will be the liquor board-approved manager and will devote his full-time and effort to the operation of the licensed business. For the purpose of our appearance this evening is the, the purpose of our appearance this evening is to request approval of your honorable Board of Supervisors to move retail restaurant liquor license number R-16243 from the city of Harrisburg to Lower Paxton Township, specifically, specifically at the Colonial Park Mall. This request is made pursuant to Pennsylvania Act 141, signed into law on December 20, 2000, which took effect February 19, 2001. A brief summary of the quota system under the liquor code might be helpful to you. Prohibition began in the United States of America on January 16, 1990, with the enactment of the 18th Amendment, and ended on December 5th, 1933, with the enactment of the 21st Amendment. The Pennsylvania liquor code was enacted shortly thereafter. The Pennsylvania liquor code established a quota system for the number of licenses available for issue in each municipality. The quota system is still in effect, and as amended, controls the number of licenses that may be issued. Population still controls the number of licenses that are available for issue by the liquor board. When first enacted, the liquor code permitted one, the issue of one license for every thousand inhabitants in, in the municipality, that permitted the service of alcoholic beverages within its borders. An amendment changed the number available in each municipality to one license for every 2,000 inhabitants. A second amendment, Act 141, now permits the issue of one license for every, based, for one license based on every 3,000 inhabitants in each county. It went from municipal to the county, rather than in each municipality. Because of this second amendment, each municipality can now decide how many licenses it wishes to have. Since the 1930s, the population of Lower Paxton Township has been growing, and the First Amendment fixed the number of licenses available for use in the Lower Paxton Township and in each municipality of the state of Pennsylvania. I have no idea what the population of Lower Paxton Township was in the roaring 30s. Whatever the population was at that time, it established the number of licenses the township would be permitted to have, except for the adoption of Act 141. Prior to the Second Amendment, with the some limited exceptions, a license could only be used within the boundary of the municipality to which it was originally issued. Act 141 now permits the transfer of the license from one municipality to another, but first requires permission of the receiving municipality. That's why we're here today. Act 141 is designed to help encourage and stimulate economic growth and the tax base by encouraging investment in our local communities. I reviewed the licensed locations now in the township, and what I found is the following. There are 26 places in the township with a retail restaurant liquor license, broken down as follows. 17 restaurants, one bowling alley, three grocery stores, three gasoline stations, and two licenses that are now inactive. The application process is a two-step process. The first is our appearance before you tonight for approval of a resolution to allow the transfer of license number R-16243 for use in a township at the Colonial Park Mall. If approved to the, to the township, the license cannot be moved out of the township for five years. The first step, if you approve our request this evening, your approval is simply to allow us to make application to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for issue of the license to our location. You are not approving the transfer. The second step, the liquor board conducts a stringent investigation to ensure that the licensed area must meet and comply with the requirements as described in the liquor code. Those requirements include an area of at least 400 feet, square feet, includes patron, including patron-serving areas, kitchen, storage, and office areas. This location far exceeds those requirements. The third step, anyone involved with the ownership of the licensed business must pass through a thorough police background check and must have the financial ability to conduct the business it intends to do. My client, Sergeet Kalodia, has previously passed these tests and is already licensed by the Liquor Control Board. During this process, before the Liquor Control Board, interested parties can file objections, uh, and get a full ground hearing. This is the, the, the poster that is now published, I'm sorry. And it, it is posted on the premises uh, when we filed the application with the liquor board, and remains posted, uh, until the license is approved or not approved, whatever. Every licensed establishment must have a designated full-time onsite manager. That individual shall be the full-time, hands-on manager, and will be there to ensure the business is operated, operated in a properly manner and in accordance with the law. Sergeet Kalicia will be the full-time manager. Subsequent enforcement, once the place has a liquor license, uh, the business undergoes scrutiny, and it becomes in, more intense over time. A business licensed by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board is probably the most scrutinized business in the state of Pennsylvania. The Bureau of Liquor Control for, and, the Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement is an investigative bureau of the Pennsylvania State Police. It has nothing to do with the Liquor Control Board. Its sole purpose is to ensure that the licensed establishment is operated in a proper and lawful manner. The Enforcement Bureau conducts both open inspections, in which the licensee knows that they are present, and undercover inspections. Undercover inspections are the most prevalent. By the law, the Bureau is required to investigate all complaints received. My 57-plus years of experience in liquor law tells me that a good number of anonymous complaints are called in by a disgruntled patron who may have been refused service, or for any other reasons. Many complaints turn out to be unfounded. However, the Bureau nevertheless does not know which complaint is valid, and so they must engage, investigate each complaint thoroughly. This restaurant shall not be a place conducive to drawing patrons who wish to sit and drink for hours. This shall be a non-smoking establishment. This shall be a family-friendly restaurant where parents can bring their children. A restaurant licensed by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board must operate first as a restaurant, and where quality food is available at a reasonable price, and secondly, the service of alcoholic beverages. Mistakes, mistakes are, uh, the minimum fine for a violation of the liquor code, usually in this manner, uh, is $1,000. However, the judges have overlooked that minimum a long time ago. Mistakes under the liquor code are expensive. For example, a violation of serving a person under the age of 21 normally begins with a fine of $1,750 and escalates rapidly. a fine of $1,750 and escalates rapidly when you have repeated violations. Multiple violations will result in the revocation of the license and total loss of your investment. Ramp is the Responsible Alcohol Management Program training, and it is a two-core training program consisting of owner-manager training and also seller-service training. Ramp is now mandatory for at least one owner or the approved manager. Since August 8, 2016, an employee hired to serve alcohol must be ramp-trained. I encourage my clients to have their employees trained in the proper methods of service of the service of alcoholic beverages. These training programs must be completed every two years because they expire in two years. Surveillance camera, I urge my clients to use surveillance cameras inside and outside of the premises. Upon approval of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, this license cannot be moved out of the township for a period of five years. My client intends to stay here and assures you that this business will operate within the strict confines of the law. Investment of your own money requires your most strict attention. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I would be encouraged to support an applicant who desires to invest in my community. We hope you all feel that way and will give favorable approval to our request. Thank you for your time and your patience. Are there any questions?
Mr. Nicholas.
Yes, sir.
Four-plus decades ago, were you the senior JAG officer at the 28th Division?
Yes, sir.
Well, you were very detailed, thorough, and professional then, and I see nothing has changed. I was the company commander at the time.
Good. Hope I treated you okay.
Yes, you did.
I just have a question.
So you weren't in the brig, huh?
What will the hours of operation be?
Well, you can open at 8:00 a.m. You have to close at 2:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can open at 11:00 a.m., but you can stay open until 2:00 a.m.
Okay, so the mall closes during the week at 8:00 and Sunday at 6:00, so then they would just use the...
I don't have to be between the mall and my client.
Okay, well, my question is, would they just use the outside entrance?
Probably.
Okay, because I'm questioning if you're open to 2:00 a.m., or, you know, could their clientele be running through the mall? That's my question for being open that late to 2:00 a.m. in the morning.
Probably use the outside entrance, yes.
And it's only going to be used for a restaurant?
Yes.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, what type of restaurant are we?
It'll be, well, it's the restaurant Kamal.
Yeah, like Indian food.
Yeah, I'm always interested in what a restaurant's going to be serving.
So it's going to be a...
That's his brother.
It's going to be, it's called Fire Lounge and Bar. So it's going to be, for your concerns, Robin, when the mall is open, the doors to the mall will be open.
Right.
So when the mall is closed, there's gates that come down, and the mall entrance and everything is closed off, and we use the outside entrance for the bar.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
We'll be opening at 11:00 a.m., and throughout the week, we'll close at 12:00 a.m., and then weekends are 2:00 a.m.
Okay.
And then we're going to have an upscale atmosphere. It's going to be like an American Indian fusion restaurant, something new and hip, you know, so we're trying something different this time.
Okay.
And are you guys aware that there's plans in the works and potential for redeveloping the mall, and that's, that it'll be under, it could be under new ownership, and it could be something different than it is now?
So we have been talking to the mall management, and nothing's certain yet, so things are up in the air, and we understand those risks, and, you know, I mean, so we understand that in the future it might be changed ownership, but there might not be, so...
Okay, well, I mean, we, you know, we like generally something that's operating, an ongoing business is better than an empty business, so, but I wanted, I assumed you knew that, but I just wanted to make sure.
We were actually looking for, last year, we've been looking for a location, and it's been kind of difficult, and sometimes you find a place, but it's, you know, I mean, somebody else buys it, and then, so we saw Buffalo Wild Wings moved out, and we said, okay, let's try it out here, and while we open this up, we can continue to look for another location that might be more permanent.
And Mr. Nicholas, you did, did you say that there was problems with the clientele at the Harrisburg location?
It was kind of a bad location in the city.
Okay.
And that's why they voluntarily closed.
We don't think you'll have those problems here.
Yeah, I mean, they, do they love the food enough to where they might bring their behavior to our quaint little township?
So this, the new...
And you come a little closer to the mic.
The new, the new location is going to be completely different. That was more like a neighborhood bar, like a taverns-type bar. This is going to be a completely different, different clientele, different price points, so I don't think, you know, many people from that, our old clientele will be coming to this bar, you know, I mean, as much, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
No.
Is there anybody from the audience that wants to say? Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Mr. Stein is in charge.
No, I was looking at him and asking that.
You thought you were.
Sure, you are, I was asking him that.
Does the audience wish to speak on this application or have any questions? I think none, Mr. Chairman, we're being ordered this time to close the public hearing regarding the license R-16243. They take action on the resolution if you so desire.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stein. And with that, we do have before us the need to take action on Resolution 23-05. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve action on Resolution 23-05, approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license R-16243 into Lower Paxton Township from the city of Harrisburg.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Best of luck with the Liquor Control Board, and welcome your business to Lower Paxton Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now need to take action to authorize payment of Application Number 2 and 3 for the reception area renovations right out here and safety upgrades to the municipal center. Any questions about the application for payments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move that we authorize payment of Application Number 2 and 3 for the reception area renovations and safety upgrades to the municipal center as posted on the public agenda.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We need to take action on Change Order Number 2 from East Coast Contracting, Inc. This also for renovations to the reception area at the municipal center. Any questions about that change order?
Mr. Miller, we already had one change order, now we're on the second change order. Can you explain why we have another one?
Yes, yeah, the first change order was a very minor product item, but this is based on some additional review with the contractors. As you can see, a short list of those items on the board there. One of the bigger changes is, as you probably saw as you came in outside, we have a new carport that is protective at the far corner here on the parking property that's going to be used specifically for our senior van service to keep all-weather parking, so they won't have to worry about cleaning the vans during the wintertime. As part of that, these doors to your left here will be closed off, the wall will be finished, and the senior van service operations were moved to that storage area currently. That's the bulk of this change order work that's being done here. Others are for some bullet-resistant filament on some of the doors that we're doing, which are glass-based. And then finally, we do have the Facilities and Assets Coordinator is currently working out of an old, smaller conference room that we'd like to bring back to a conference room, and by putting a permanent closure, where there is now a curtain closure between himself and the senior van service, will allow us to convert that to an office for the coordinator and bring that smaller conference room back. So, but the bulk of the work is in relation to moving the senior van service to this left side of the building off of the Parks and Rec Wing, so they can have closer access with regards to the carport to service the community.
Okay.
All right. Any additional questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve Change Order Number 2 from East Coast Contracting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we need to take action on Resolution 2023-09, authorizing the submission of a grant request for Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority. Good evening.
Good evening, Board members. Tonight, I present to you Resolution 2023-09. I am requesting the grant submission of CFA Greenways Trails and Recreation Program. This grant is for Stray Winds Park Improvement Project. Were you able to, there we go.
Yep.
In an effort to work through the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was completed earlier this year, we are recommending to make improvements to Stray Winds Park. The improvements would provide a walking path around the perimeter of the park and would add ADA accessible benches along the path and native trees. It would also add an ADA accessible grill to the pavilion, and additionally, there would be an upgrade to the playground that currently exists. It is for a 5- to 12-year-old, we would add a couple features there, but then also add a tot lot of 2 to 5 and add seating for the parental supervision. The total project would be 295. We are requesting for a grant in the amount of 250,000, which would leave the remaining amount of 45,000. So I am requesting approval of this application.
If the money's there, apply for it. It's a new-brainer.
Okay, any questions?
This is the same park, Rachel, where the pavilion is.
Correct. The existing pavilion is there. Nothing has been done to this park since we received it from the HOA, and I don't know that year offhand, to be honest.
It's been a while.
It's, yeah, it's been a while.
And this is according to the Park's Master Plan, which touches pretty much on every park in the township before we're done.
Correct.
Any additional questions on this particular grant request? Hearing none, is there a motion that we authorize the submission of the grant request?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, bless you, that we approve Resolution 2023-09, authorizing the submission of a grant request for Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant of 250,000 from the Commonwealth Finance Authority.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. We also need to take action on Resolution 2023-10, and we're going to be requesting a peer grant from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for a park agreement with sports organizations. Rachel, you want to explain that?
So Resolution 2023-10 is, as you said, through the DCNR Peer Program. This peer grant program helps municipalities through a collaborative process, working with a professional consultant to assist with a specific project to improve administrative services to the community. The peer grant project I would like to request funding for is the development of written agreements with every sports organization that utilizes and provides maintenance support for the township park facilities. Our department is responsible for coordinating the use of township outdoor recreation facilities by the public. At the present time, the township is coordinating 35-plus organizations to utilize 5,000 hours' worth of field space throughout the park season. However, there are about 12 to 15 organizations that have been provided free use in exchange for assistance of maintenance on the fields. By establishing these written agreements, we would be able to designate the field space that is permitted for them to maintain the specified recreational programs, establish routine maintenance and custodial services divided by the township and the organization, establish guidelines on concession use, permits, and operations, determine permitted storage locations throughout the park, and establish policies and procedures for sports organizations to submit additional park maintenance requests and field improvements annually. The total project for this would be 19,800. The grant I am requesting is for 18,000, which would leave the township an $1,800 fee, but this would include 330 hours of consultant experience to assist with this.
Questions, Board members?
Sounds like a good bang for our buck.
Any public questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-10?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve action on Resolution 2023-10, requesting a peer grant from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Lower Paxton Township Park Agreement with sports organizations.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
This takes us to subdivision, thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
This takes us to subdivision and land development. Good evening, Mrs. Erby.
Good evening.
Okay, first of all, we need to take action on a preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan for proposed Take 5, which is Plan 23-06.
Yes, the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for proposed Take 5 involves demolition of the existing 1,282-square-foot, one-story brick building at 4013 Victoria Avenue and redeveloping the lot to support an auto service station. The project involves constructing a 1,739-square-foot Take 5 auto service station with three service bays that will offer drive-through oil changes. Associated site improvements will include underground stormwater facilities, landscaping, and parking. The site has a total area of 20,859 square feet and is located within the Commercial General Zoning District. The plan was approved at the April 5, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. There were two variances approved for the site that were related to planning strips and front yard setbacks. There are five waivers requested for approval, and staff supports all five of those waivers. There are four administrative comments and four general comments associated with the plan. Alex Tweedy is here to answer any questions that the Board may have for the plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you have any comments you would like to add to that?
No, we've worked out all technical issues. We had good discussions with the Planning Commission as far as the circulation, the operation of the facility. We've revised the plans in accordance with some discussions at that meeting that modified some of the waiver requests slightly. We've resubmitted plans as noted. Staff and the township engineer now support all the waiver requests as proposed, and we're here for your approval tonight.
Board members, any questions?
Are you okay with all the comments?
Yeah, we're, we accept all the review letters where acceptable with the conditions in the June 2 letter.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the preliminary and final subdivision land development plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for proposed Take 5, Plan 23-06.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And I'd like to thank the gentleman for driving five hours from Rochester, New York, and representing Take 5. He's sitting right here.
Five hours to get here and 30 seconds of comment.
The young man sitting here.
Oh, the young man was, you drove for five hours?
We walked in together, and he told me I was in the car for five hours.
Oh, my. Well, you had a successful outcome, so it was worth it.
I mean, while you're here, you want to say anything?
Seriously, do you, yeah, oh, okay, if you wanted to say anything, it's not an issue, okay. Well, welcome to Lower Paxton Township.
Yes, welcome. Okay, we also need to take action on a preliminary subdivision and land development plan for Elizabeth Village. This is Plan 23-12.
The preliminary subdivision plan for Elizabeth Village proposes to consolidate four existing tracks located off of Colonial Road into... four existing tracks located off of Colonial Road into one parcel totaling 48.013 acres to allow for a 235-town home unit age-restricted community to be developed in accordance with the plan. This development will be constructed in three phases. The site is currently zoned institutional, which allows for the residential retirement development option that generally accommodates residents aged 55 and older. Additionally, the plan proposes 23.52 acres of open space along with 2.5 miles of pedestrian pathways that consist of walking trails and sidewalks to provide access throughout the community. Private streets are proposed for the development, and the community will be served by public water and public sewer. The plan was approved at the May 3, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. There are 14 staff-supported waiver requests, two modifications that are also supported by staff, two administrative comments, and four general comments. And Doug Gosick from Williams Site Civil is here to answer any questions for the board.
Gentlemen?
Ron Lucas, Attorney General, Harrisburg, with Doug Gosick, AP Williams, our project engineer. We can't beat the 15, five hours to get here, so 15 minutes.
I think you were a bit closer.
A bit closer, yes. We're here, Eric could not be here this evening, he apologized for that, but he asked us to come. Essentially, this is a plan you approved last December. The change is, he's dividing it into three phases. With today's economic climate, it's just too much to go, try to put all the improvements in upfront, the financial security, so he's doing it in three phases, and that's really the change. And Doug has cleaned up some of the things that were small, minor things that went into staff review back in December.
Correct.
And that's really it. The one comment that was in the public safety comment we identified before, the same comments were used, that we're not going to accept putting license plate readers on, in the development. That was a suggestion, not a requirement, but if I didn't put it up, point that out, Eric would say, why didn't you say that, so nobody thinks we're going to do that, scare people.
I remember that meeting.
Yes, yeah.
And just the one thing on air, Amanda pointed out that there's two additional lots because of regrading some, trying to reduce some grading and retaining more.
Yeah, there are two additional units on the, on the first cul-de-sac, and that was allowed because of the authority agreeing to allow some forest main on that cul-de-sac. But essentially, it's the same plan beyond that, not a whole lot different than what you approved back in December.
So it's still 55-plus?
It is, yes.
Very good.
Okay.
Go ahead, Robin.
Brett, are you here to offer any suggestions, or? Okay, okay, I didn't know you were sitting here if you wanted to talk.
How many hours you drive? You're not even close to the record.
Any other board member questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the Preliminary Subdivision and Land Development Plan for Elizabeth Village?
I'll move that we approve the Preliminary Subdivision Land Development Plan for Elizabeth Village, Plan Number 2312, with all of the waiver requests, as long as everybody's on board with them, as laid out on the public agenda.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, could we take a roll call vote, please?
Would you like a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, yes, may we have a roll call vote then on the approval?
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Zumis?
Aye.
Mr. Judd?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro?
I'm going to be refusing myself.
Mr. Judd? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Henry?
Aye. Okay, the plan is thereby approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your patience this evening. Well, that takes us to improvement guarantees. Any questions about the five improvement guarantees that we have before us?
Yeah, Mr. Henry, could we just do Shadebrook Phase One separate, please?
Oh, yes. Okay, then would there be a motion to approve the Linglestown Fire Company Kendall Oaks Phase Four, Stray Winds Farms Phase 9B, and Amber Fields Phase, is that V?
Seven B.
Seven, yeah. We need bigger type.
That's Rocky VII, the movie, they haven't made yet. So moved.
So moved, thank you, Mr. Judd, for bailing me out on that. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Also, then, is there a motion to approve the improvement guarantee for Shadebrook Phase One?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Lindsey?
I'll be abstaining for personal reasons.
Mr. Zumis?
Aye.
Mr. Judd?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye. They are approved. This takes us to the payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve payment of the bills for the Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any announcements?
I have one. Just want to invite Lower Paxton Township residents, and if you know of them outside of the township, Friday night at 7:00 o'clock at Heroes Grove in our AmpliTheater, we will be having our first concert series of the summer, and it is free, and bring your lounge chair.
I think it's worth noting, too, last week, Bob Rogers, Rogers Clock Service in Linglestown, performed some maintenance on the clock in Linglestown Square, and we want to thank him for doing that, and the Rotary Club of Colonial Park Foundation, which handles the financial expenses for that. So now, the clock is all repaired, and it is keeping accurate time, so...
And I wanted to have another thank you. Mr. Zumis, Mr. Judd, and myself were in the Linglestown Memorial Day Parade, so I wanted to thank Huffman Ford for providing a car for us to ride in, so we did not have to walk.
That is indeed important. Anything else, lady and gentlemen, for the good of the order? Okay, we will have our next board meeting, it'll actually be a workshop meeting next Tuesday, that would be June 13, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. here in this room. Is there a motion then to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.